Okay. Um. Well, it's five, so I guess we can get started.
Okay.
Um, we'll come to order. This is the meeting of the Rules and Government Relations Committee. It's 5:00 PM on February the 11th. Oh, Owen can jump in.
You're here.
And it's, uh, yeah, this is meeting remotely per Governor Baker's executive order and streaming live on Zoom and YouTube.
Not very well.
Well, you know what I mean. We're on, we're on Zoom anyway. Um, uh, so, uh, yeah, that's right. We're not actually on YouTube. Do we have minutes from the last meeting?
Yes, January 28th. Uh, we do have minutes. I wanna, um, so if, Dan, if you want to make a motion, I want to make an amendment.
I'll make a motion and accept the minutes. Okay, 28.
Okay, I'll second that, but I want to make an amendment that in the heading of that I have minutes with the date of 2020. I will change it to say 2020 more.
Yeah, I figured there'll be with us early in the year.
Yeah. So.
Okay, motion second, all in favor, councillor.
I.
Councillor Coniff.
I.
And I vote I as well. Uh, motion passes. Um, I know that there's a 6:00 PM hearing, and so we're gonna want to wrap this up by then.
You mean the 6:00 PM healthcare thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I just sort of assumed, I actually will not be able to attend that, but I assumed that you two might be wanting to, so. Uh, so I guess we should jump right into it. I said that we were going to discuss councillor Zaret's Rule 5C Amendment, and I see that councillor Zaret has called in. Councillor, do you want to just sort of introduce this?
Uh, yes, I'd be happy to. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. I'm in my car. I apologize that I could not be there in, well, in person on Zoom. Um, but I am pleased to spare you from having to see my face. Um, so kind of a prevailing issue that at least for myself has been that when new business is introduced in meetings, a lot, most of the time, there's very little public introduction of the text. Absolutely, the information is included in the agenda, but let's be honest, not everyone reads the agenda, both from within members of the public and certainly members of the council. They might read part of it, they might skim through it. And it occurred to me that it would be worthy, for the sake of both transparency and visibility, to require new business to have some sort of a public introduction. This helps both members of the public actually hear and maybe better understand new ordinances, especially complex ones and, and ones that may have significant impact on the city and/or other measures, be introduced and understand what they are and what they mean. I'm not looking for a Gettysburg Address, but maybe a brief summary of what these things are. Too often, we pass measures that the public turns around and says, I never even knew this was happening. And again, um, a lot of this has to do with chain of communication and, and making things visible and accessible to the public more in general, not just with this measure. But there's been things recently where even members of the council, and this isn't meant to disparage anyone, this is just an observation. Like when we, when we passed the PACE amendment, I felt that despite the fact that there was a lot of information included in the packet about that, that there was some confusion when that got to public discussion. So what I'm recommending is that when new business is introduced, that the individual introducing it gives a brief summary, goes over maybe some of the supplemental information, not necessarily to read it, read through it, but just to say what was included and why. And have an opportunity also to clarify any points, certainly not to debate, which I know is against our rules, to clarify some points, and then also, um, if necessary, to have a discussion about which committee it's being sent to. Um, and I think this would help the public better understand what we're doing, the information we're discussing, the measures and ordinances that we're, we're putting forward. And, um, and for the councillors as well, because unfortunately, sometimes we can't make all the committee meetings and we may not be able, this may be the only time that some of us have a real good opportunity to digest new information before it comes to a full vote.
All right. Um, so do you, do you guys have any thoughts about this? Or questions for, uh, yes, Councillor Coniff?
So, um, I do understand the intent. But I, I feel like we're creating a rule around something that is essentially common sense, which is if you're introducing new business, either by by the description that you have put into the packet, that should be clear. We will have a lot of time during committee to ask clarifying questions and to debate it. And we will have time when it comes back to city council to ask more questions and debate it. Like, that's kind of the point of bringing it out of committee to further debate it. So this feels like another step. It gets dangerously close to debating it when we start talking about clarifying questions. Because clarifying question to me is, oh, did you mean the red ordinance or the blue ordinance? I meant the red ordinance. Okay, thank you. Goodbye. Like, it's not the red ordinance that looks at and has, like, it just starts to feel like we're we're going down a slippery slope of overruling, and by that I mean creating more rules to dictate how information comes to the council. I think the rule as it is today, which is defining an action that you need by the city council, introducing all of the information that you want the council to consider, feels like enough. And I will tell you, my biggest caution on it, this is when we start to allow a back and forth on the introduction of new business. If there's a way to get to this place without that back and forth, which gives me a little bit of heart failure, I might be more open to it.
Right.
Councillor Rist.
Uh, oh, I believe your intent is to allow the public to hear the introduction of, say, cannabis delivery ordinance and what does it mean? I believe that, that's where the hole in communication may be in your intent. In other words, when something's introduced, it gives the public who might be listening a chance to also hear, not just, even though they have the ability to read the packet and things like that, but to hear the intent of the councillor that's introducing. Um, I can look at a finance committee appropriation and there's a purpose that I must, I must read it. That's law. And then I must define the purpose of that appropriation. But I can't get into the other details of that without getting into the issues of debating, uh, asking the mayor, what do you mean by this? Not in a, at the point of sending it to committee as an introduction. So that is already self-explanatory, but I have no problem with verbally introducing it, making sure that a councillor just doesn't send something to the council and then now explaining, here's my intent in doing this. That, that helps the public understand. But I agree with Peg. The clarifying questions, debating the measure, and I also think it's the, it's the president's, it gets into a little bit, for me, a back and forth about which committee. Uh, the president should have the ability to say, like, we often debate the president and vice president, which committee something should go to. And I know Peg calls the chair and say, hey, Tom, do you want to take this? I think it would work for you or something. I think the president should maintain that, that authority. So I have no problem. Introduction of any new measure shall include a summary of the measure in any associated documents. The rest I have a problem with because I'm worried as Peg is about debate and et cetera. So I'm just, just wanted to say that. I think it's, it's important that the, the public hear the reasons for that. And, and there are a lot of measures which that would help. That's my thought.
Um, I have a few thoughts about this, and Councillor Coniff, I see your hand. But before saying, I just want to give councillor Zaret a chance to respond because, you know, there's a bit that we've said already.
Yeah, and I can't raise my hand, so I appreciate it. No, I think those are all thoughtful responses, and as with, with pretty much everything I introduce, I like to give a very broad, I like to offer very broad language so that we can look at it and A, not leave anything out, and B, you know, have enough on the table that we don't, so we don't miss anything. So I get what you're saying about clarifying questions. You know, uh, you could certainly rule something out of order if it appears that something's being debated. But I'm also just as equal, the, 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 the root of the, the the, the root of the impetus to introduce this here is basically what councillor Rist said, that too many times I hear, oh, we have an article of new business, I move to, I, I make a motion to move this to such and such a committee, second vote done. And no one knows what just happened, certainly not from the public. And again, sometimes from the council as well, we don't know what happened. And I think, so, and, and even if people read the packet, sometimes it's not exactly clear what's happening. So I, the, the, the biggest thing that I'm invested here, in here, is to just be able to require a brief explanation and a brief introduction of the business, which I really think would help a lot of people. Uh, and if, if discussion or if clarifying questions you feel may tread, tread too closely to debate and/or if discussions of which committee to refer to impinges too much on the, the, the power of the president, that's fine. I, I can, I'm not fully invested in those. I am very invested in, in the requiring some form of introduction.
Councillor Coniff, I saw your hand.
I think we can accomplish this potentially in a way that would work. So we could do one of a couple of things. We could have the individual who has the new business, who has brought the new business forward to write the motion out. The motion can contain a lot of information. It can, it can be, you know, I move to amend city council rule 5C from this to this for this reason, you know, give all your arguments and then let some, I mean, that would allow you in the form of a motion to explain what you're introducing, allow a second, and then we could, you know, move that, you know, I'd like to move this to Rules and Government Relations, yada, 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 and explain what the motion is. That might be a way to do it within the construct of parliamentary rules.
Councillor Rist.
The current rule asks for, I'll paraphrase, council measure request shall include a detailed list of objectives and/or requested council action. All requested drafts or actions must be submitted to the council clerk for conclusion on next meeting agenda packet. That is written documentation that the rule requires. What Owen is trying to do is introduce the word verbal in the sense that it has to be a verbal introduction must accompany that. So I think if we take what, what Owen has in, has suggested and just stop. Introduction of any new measure shall include a summary of the measure in the associated documents period. That's all we add. Because that's the verbal introduction of what's going on. The rest can't, I, I can't agree with the rest of clarifying questions. So I think that does what you're saying, Peg. It's just the verbal uh, introduction is what I think Owen is looking for, and that just is to include that detailed list of objective, objectives and everything else that's in there. I've included in the packet the summary of the cannabis law, and I also wanted you to, you know, all of that verbally being stated helps again to give the public even more information. Does that work, Owen, for you?
You got, you nailed it, Dan. That's exactly my intention. I mean, the other stuff was kind of, you know, ancillary, but really what you just said is what I'm hoping to accomplish.
So, go ahead, Tom, you go.
Um, so, yeah, the, the one thing, like, I think, Dan, you make a really good point that this kind of already happens by law when finance does a first reading of something that you'll say, I have before you a request, it came out of the fire department, they need to replace this thing, they say it's broken, it's going to cost this. And so right now I make this motion to do this. But you, you do introduce these things like this. Um, what I was gonna say is that I feel like, um, some of what, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I feel like there's actually been kind of a cultural shift on this in the council post COVID and remote life, just maybe as an attempt to streamline what have become extremely long meetings, but I recall the first things that I introduced, like having whoever was the chair be like, Tom, do you want to introduce this? And me giving a little pitch on what it is before either the chair or myself makes a motion. And I feel like we moved away to that and towards just being like, let's just make this motion and keep going. And, and what I actually would like to ask of uh, my committee members as sort of president and vice president is like, was that like, uh, was that adjusting to real, like, for us to be in alignment with some best practices we weren't following, or was that something where we trying to control the flow of things for very slow meetings, or like, was that even an intentional shift? I just noticed that that did shift sometime at the beginning of 2020.
So I will, I mean, clearly, as the new president, that shift happened because of me, so I can speak to it. So what I observed in the prior four years as being a city councillor was that there was a lot of conversation and a lot of discussion around new business that I thought was not appropriate. And I think, I think there is a happy medium between, let me explain to you every reason I'm bringing this forward in the next hour versus, I want to make a motion to introduce new business that is going to a subcommittee that will in fact flesh it out, because what I'm saying right now could be 180 degrees different than the way we bring it back. And so I consciously did not feel as though what was happening prior was appropriate. It veered into the realm of debate. We were allowing councillors to ask questions of the person introducing the business. It started to get a little bit uh, squishy. And yes, I made a conscious decision to, to keep debate very with guardrails around debate. And, and anybody who has talked to me in the last year and two months, I'm a, I'm a big proponent of having the conversations in a way that the public knows the conversation's gonna happen. And so if, but I agree. I think what Owen is suggesting here will actually work. I think if we can create an introductory motion or an introductory statement, not unlike we do with appropriations. But I don't, what I don't want is for it to become a platform for you to sell the thing in the next 45 minutes. You're telling us what you want, why you want it, and why it's important, and then get out and let, make the motion and we'll move it on and we'll have those discussions. So if we can parameterize that, I'm cool with it.
I, I like it, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Dan.
I like it, Peg. I think what you're, what you're suggesting is in the, in the, the councillor who presents this should write an introductory motion. Hey, there's your face. I hope you're pulled over.
I'm parked.
An introductory motion, which would be written out, but he would read, he or she would read at the time of the new business. And that introductory motion might list some of the objectives. It is my objective to introduce this rule to add more verbal communication to the public, et cetera, whatever you want to say. But you don't, as Peg says, try to sell it to the council. You're just trying to say, this is my intent in doing this. And I think if it's part of a written motion, so the rule that we've adopted here is a verbal introduction might be a verbal, verbally introduced at a meeting with a motion that is prepared beforehand or something. I don't know.
Maybe the motion is, I make a motion to introduce the following new business. Boom, 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 boom. We allow that new business to be introduced, and then we make a motion to move it to a committee. Maybe, something like that.
Well.
Although I guess being on the agenda, it's introduced.
Well, Owen is asking for he's at, at, his language in here is, uh, has authority behind it. No motion to refer shall be accepted without such introduction. In other words, if you don't introduce the thing, you don't get to send it to committee. I mean, that's a rule now. And I have to admit, over my many years on the council, we've had a lot of agenda items that just get sent to committee. Nobody says anything, you know? So there's some valid criticism right there. Lately, though, I think people do try to bring something forward. I mean, if Jeff brings something to us and wants to, uh, have it sent to committee, I would be very cautious asking him to explain the whole thing. Nothing against Jeff, but he could be long with this.
Words. Um, yes, Owen.
But, but that's, but to that point too, as we know, there are agenda items that might be, that are brought by like the planner, for instance, that, you know, contain PowerPoint presentations, and I'm not looking for that. I think, I think councillor, councillor Coniff, you and I probably are on the same page. I just probably am not expressing it well, that I'm looking just for a very terse, brief kind of, you know, statement, you know, list objectives, almost like a bullet list type of thing. And then like a bibliography, so to speak. Here are the, here are the materials, the materials to support this are included in the packet, so, so. I, I agree with you. It's, it's not an opportunity to kind of soapbox and try to sway people's votes. It's more just to let them know what we're voting about and what will be discussed in committee. And again, I, I can't stress enough how important I think this is for the public. And so that's really all I'm trying to accomplish here. The rest of the stuff that I included in there again is, you know, you could take it or leave it, but I wanted to put it in there just in case it intrigued any of you.
Do we want the introduction of any such new measure? Summary of the measure, et cetera, to be a motion in the packet? Or do we just want to trust the councillors to do a verbal introduction? I mean, I could go either way. Right now, I would just add, use the first two sentences that Owen is suggesting, adding it to 5C and be done with it.
I have no objection to that approach.
It's a verbal, it's a verbal introduction.
So.
And then Councillor Coniff.
So, um, I'm, I am completely on board with all this. I am having slight heart palpitations around the fact that we have nine individuals who like to do things nine different ways. So wouldn't we be open to creating a template for introduction of new business so that there's like four things that you can identify? And you fill it out and you submit it with your new business so that we have a certain level of consistency across the board.
Uh, councillor Zaret, I saw your hand, and then I have some thoughts.
Yeah, you know, that's an interesting idea, whether either A needs to be submitted in the packet or B just kind of within the rule, kind of have like a, an outline of what, what that sounds like. And, and just to quickly, I gotta get off in like six minutes, but to quickly echo what, what councillor Peak was saying in regards to finance, uh, items, you know, usually it's typically councillor Rist. In this case, he'll, he'll make the motion to refer and he'll give like a two-sentence summary, like, like Tom had said. You know, the purpose of this is, you know, because, uh, we, uh, we need new rims for the fire truck, like, and this is, you know, that's all I'm really looking for. I'm looking just to kind of standardize that across uh, across all new business. And I don't know, Councillor Coniff, you were specifically worried about me because I tend to be verbose when I introduce things, but I do, I do like the idea of some sort of kind of standardization or an example of what this should look like. So I mean, I'm happy to kind of write something up if you want me to do some homework.
Um, well, I think that would be kind of this committee's responsibility, but if you want to send it over to us, I'm fine with that. And he, and I will, I'm gonna make a comment to your verbocity comment. And I think we have to, notwithstanding that, and we all know that you do like to talk, but notwithstanding that, I think there has to be a certain level of equity across the city councillors. And so the fact that you might type up nine pages to introduce rule 5C and another councillor may be able to do it in three sentences or may, may not have the, I don't know. I'm not making myself clear here, but I don't feel like we should allow nine pages sometimes because it's you and allow a half a paragraph because it's somebody else. I think there needs to be a certain level of equity, because if you start to get into a lot of words, you are starting to sell and pitch and essentially you're talking to a quorum and you are giving your opinion on how we all should vote in a setting that it's not designed to do that on first reading. So here's my thing, here's what it's for, and then get out. And so if we had some sort of a template, that might be, make it a little clearer.
Councillor Rist.
I agree with the template. I think, I think Peg's onto it. I think Peg can, well, Owen, you could submit something to Peg, but I think Peg can do the template of what this would be. I think she's on to the fact that everybody who introduces new business should do this. Uh, I would exclude new business like appropriations because they're by law, they have to be read that way. But maybe any other new business, where, you know, what's the new business for, you know?
Yeah, I think.
I think because Peg, you know where you came from with this and where you'd like it to end up. And Owen just wants it read at the meeting and not just be sent to committee.
Yep.
I think that would be the happy medium. I think we could have that part of the rule as a template, because once we make it a rule, everybody sees, hey, remember, if you're introducing new business, here's the template that we want you to use. Make sure you include these items when you introduce it. Does that work?
I kind of like the idea of a template. Um, I mean, I will also say that not every measure requires the same level of nuanced detail in the introduction. You know, fixing like, hey, uh, it turns out this is not, uh, legal, so we need to stop doing it. That's one thing. Versus like, what you need, you know, like, with, I just introduced a thing with a page-long cover letter, and the reason is it's complicated, right? It's like, it's just complex stuff. And for you to understand what the problem is that I'm seeking to solve and why I think this is the right solution, does take some words, like it's, and I, I, I completely hear Councillor Coniff, your equity concerns, but it's like, not all of these items are equal, like, at some point, there, there does need There, there does need to be a little bit of flexibility, I think, for just sort of how to. Like handle that on an issue by issue basis. Councillor's there and I see your hand and I know you have to go in a minute.
Yeah, I gotta run. So I mean, I, I would just echo what councillor Peak that said, just sometimes when there's more information. Included, it's not necessarily for the sake of, of being wordy. It's just because it's, it needs some of that information needs to be. Included. So, but I gotta go. I do appreciate you all considering this and. I'm happy to do any legwork provided. You know, if you need my, if you want me to do anything to make more recommendations based on what we discussed, I could touch base with the. Chairperson Peak later on.
And I may reach out to you, Owen, once I get a template created just for your feedback.
I would love that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I gotta go. Take care. Everyone be safe.
So would the idea then be that the template itself is included as like an appendix to the rules for future use?
If you want equity, Peg, I think you have to put it in the rule. We're not always going to be on the council. The rule is, is designed to give the council some direction.
We can, yeah, I, I guess I was trying to keep it open to future presidents to do it in a way that works. For how they conduct the meeting. This is my preferred method, but.
This, this is a sample template. Sample. It's not what you have to do. It's a sample.
Because the next president may be like, I want you to stand at the podium and pitch it to all of us.
Now that would be an.
I would have heart failure, but. Yeah, okay. So do you want to vote on this after I work up a template and we can have another conversation?
I think where I think we are, Tom, is the first two sentences are okay, maybe tweak them a little bit. Councillor shall use a, a. A brief as the template is provided or something. I don't know, maybe Peg, you could with your template, look at the first two, two lines of his suggested rule and. Tweak it to where it works for the template.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Dan.
I said, what do you think, Tom?
Oh, well, then I guess I came in at a good time. A template might actually also be helpful because, you know, ever since we. Did sort of the updated version of this rule. So this rule has been amended once by councillor Rest and once by myself. And there are, like, every once in a while, something comes up where I'm like. Is this really introduced in the spirit of what we are asking here? And so having sort of not just for this last part, but having something where it's like, if you want to submit things, here's the information we'd really like. So that it's, it's there each time, because I feel like sometimes something gets submitted and I'm like. I could probably argue that this is not really up to the standard of this rule, but I just like, you know, I don't always. Especially if it's like one of the, like a newer councillor, I don't want to like, make it a big. Make a big deal out of it, but having a template might actually help standardize that thing in general.
I think it's great.
Yeah, I like this idea. Do we just want to hit pause on this for the time being and?
Let's try to finish it up at the next meeting, I would think.
Yeah, I think, yeah, and. President Coniff, you can take a lead on the template and maybe touch base with councillors there at a few would like. All right. Um, cool. Is there anything else? I did want to tell you, I reached out to councillor Kuzinski about the. I sent him an email about the. Charter amendment, and I never heard back from him. I probably should have given him a call or something, but I, I just gave him, I sent mail and then sort of.
Is this on the mayor compensation? I thought at the last meeting, we voted to remove that without prejudice.
I had asked.
To get JP's input. I would do it and explain, it's not that we're putting it aside, we just want to include it with a new charter. Request after the current charter. Amendments are approved by the legislature.
Okay, well, in that case, like, absent any new information, I would entertain that motion at this time.
I move that we remove the charter of bedrood as requested by councillor Kuzinski without prejudice.
Motion a second, all in favor, councillor Coniff? Councillor Rest? My vote I as well. Okay, so we can move that off our agenda. I don't really think there's anything else.
Well, I wanted to tell you that Peg and I had a meeting. With the mayor on the budget and we talked about the possibility of anti-bias training costing money. And she went into detail about how, and I thought she made some sense how it could. Correct me if I say this wrong, Peg, that we could make a rule about anti-bias training. Because it would be against. She referred to, you know, elections in that you are being elected. As a councillor and then that's part of your. I, I guess I just didn't understand her there, but it made sense when she said it.
What she's saying is that if we make it a rule. We, we could make it a rule in much the same way that we have the rule for saying the pledge of allegiance. Not every councillor may or may not align to that. And every councillor may or may not align to anti-bias training, but when you make it a rule. They need to do it. And they, you know what I mean? So because i- if we just. Said you had to take it, people could go, no, we don't. We don't have to do anything. You know?
Yeah, no, I totally, sorry, councillor.
Any rule could be violated by the council member and the only people that could. You know, enforce that would be the voters. Or recall or, you know, whatever. We could just all get mad at the person because it.
I mean, she did say, she did make it clear that if we made this rule and people opted not to take it, what is our? Result of that? What are we going to do about that? And we need to have an answer to that.
I suppose we could vote to censure somebody. I don't know. Well, then don't just take the training.
Well, right, I mean, yes, but someone could say it is my constitutional right not to.
Yeah, it is.
The thing about the rule. The rule could be a councillor shall take anti-bias training, going back to the charter. Or it is recommended that councillors should take anti-bias training as provided by the city of East Hampton. Because the mayor did indicate that there's something coming down the pipe from the attorney general's office, et cetera. So. If we do it that way, there is an out that, you know, if a councillor doesn't want to take it, okay. Now, we just all got from, I guess there's a new person in human resources about the ethics thing. We have to take that. State law. If the anti-bias training comes, becomes a state law, well, that's different. Just let me finish, Tom. I just don't think we can make it a rule that's mandatory. And that sounds like it's bad, but. I think the mayor's worried about the legal ramifications. I don't know.
I mean, at the end of the day, any of these rules, like I could just submit something without this packet and, well, I mean, I guess you could just say. Well, then we're not introducing this. I could just decide to not say the pledge of allegiance, right? And. You know, or I could decide to swear a whole lot, you know, and say a bunch of rude and offensive and racist.
That's kind of already in the, like, you can't do that.
Well, it's in the rules, but like I have a first amendment right, you know, but like, what do you really have to do? You could censure me. That's. Tool you, you know, and that probably doesn't look great for me when I'm running for reelection. You say, oh, did you know that he was censured because he refused to take? Anti-bias training, like, that's, that's not exactly, but like, yeah, we can't eject somebody from the council. That's down to the voters and. And it, yeah, it seems a little intense, but like, just do the training. I don't know.
Well, I, I, I guess I was, I was impressed with the mayor's comment and Peg, I thought she. Was very adamant that we couldn't make it a mandatory, although I wonder if she's making it mandatory for employees. I don't know. We have to talk to her more about it, I guess.
I don't think as an employee, well, I don't know. I, yeah, I mean, it, it may cross a line if you make it mandatory, but. City council is its own little bubble of protocols. And if that's a protocol. You know, and there is a consequence for not following the protocol, then sure.
I, I hate to break Mark into it, but if we're really worried about the legality of requiring it, we ask him. Because I like the idea that we require it. I think we should require it. But the mayor made it clear that she thought that might not be legal. I mean, I don't know.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean. A little more research on that.
I always forget that prior to being a mayor, our, our mayor was a lawyer and has. Some insights on these things that might have gone over my non-law.
She does know a lot about election law, so. I don't know. I just think if we really want to make it mandatory, we may need legal, legal opinion.
This is like another layer of. I was just thinking about the complications of funding this and now there's like also the legal complications of like, what does this even? Mean to have something like this as a rule. So, yeah, I think this is probably something that is going to require.
She said that there's something coming down from the attorney general's office that the councillor can use.
Okay, so should we sit on this until that happens and see if it?
Well, I'd love to bring the mayor in and get a clarification of where she is with this.
Well, yes.
Because she knows more about what's coming down the pipe too.
No, I understand, but I also, you know, I, I guess I would, in a certain sense, I want to keep. Separation between us, like, I get that she knows a lot of stuff, but. There might be stuff that we can figure out on our own. And I would like to have that opportunity. And then bring her in.
Well, the reason we needed her was because of the money. That's what we brought it up.
That's a different story.
As provided by the city, the city might have anti-bias trading that they're getting. From the state that they're requiring for department head say, we use it. And it may be free.
Or we don't. Is, all I'm trying to say is we can decide how we want this to go. And if the mayor. You know, then we pitch to the mayor and say, we appreciate the city's doing this version of anti-bias training. The council. Wants this version and we're asking you to allocate the same amount of money that you would have for us to take that version. To take this version. That's the discussion, I think. I'd like to have autonomy to figure out what we want to take. Versus just taking whatever the city has.
I just don't know what's out there. There's a lot of different.
Right, and, but that's the topic, right? That's.
Councillor's there.
Of course you do. I mean. I like the fact that we, they should have to do it, because we're talking about the next council from the beginning of the council. We may have some people who don't agree with, most of us are quote unquote liberal. May not have those people on the next council. So anti-bias training might be valuable.
We can, yeah, no, these are, these are important things to, to think about.
I think if a former councillor who made a comment about the quarter weekend opening a lock at any bias training, he might not have made it.
Perhaps that could have been helpful.
Or he probably would never have taken it. I don't know.
All right, well, anything else on this topic? All right, is there anything else we want to go over before we adjourn?
What's happening with committee chair, the, the committee chair email? What will we wait? We're waiting on the new.
We were, we didn't, we still don't have like. They are, yeah.
She started Monday.
Oh, perfect. Well, then I will, I have a call with the mayor. I, I, I will ask that we get that meeting scheduled.
Her name is Karen. And I think she sent us all an email, actually.
Yeah.
Oh, fantastic.
Yeah, have her come to the meeting and tell us what would entail.
Yeah, that's a great idea. So do you want to try and take that up at our next meeting then? If she's available, I'll see if I can reach out. Let's see, what, what does this, my schedule look like? Next.
The next. Well, the next Thursday is the twenty fifth, Tom.
I have a six PM on the twenty fifth, but I could do a short meeting, like a five to six.
I think that'd be fine. We're, we're, we went over a few things tonight and it's only four to six, so.
Do you, do you want to try for that, for the, the twenty fifth? Okay, great. I will. Make a note to schedule that and, yeah, sounds good.
I'll move readjourn.
Second.
Motion a second, all in favor, councillor Coniff? Councillor Rest? All right, and I vote I as well. Thanks, guys.
Night, everybody. Have a good evening.